All is meeting in order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can we please start with a roll call? Council President Prince, here.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
And Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. And tonight we're going to start with a special presentation on legislative.
Good evening again. I'm Eric Perry, Government Affairs Manager for the City of Renton here with David Foster, the city's lobbyist representing us down in Olympia. Tonight, we're going to be going over just a brief overview of what to expect from this upcoming legislative session. With that, David, I will... Maybe? Hard to get good tech support these days. Okay, try to... There we go. All right, David, all yours. Good to see you all. Thank you for having me back. Eric asked me to, of course, come and give a quick overview of what to expect, or at least some of the things we can expect in the upcoming 2025 legislative session. So I'll just start out with, it's a long session, it's the 105-day session, and this is the session that is used to develop the three budgets, the capital budget, the operating budget, and the transportation budget for the two years that runs July 1, in this case 2025, through June 30, 2027. We did talk about this briefly earlier, but I will mention that as the budgets are being developed and the governor is looking to present his budget proposal just before leaving office in mid-December, the budget comes out in mid-December, not when he leaves office. They are looking at somewhere between a $10 and a $12 billion deficit as compared to the last budget cycle. They have to look at it in four-year terms, so it is a four-year number, not a one- or two-year number. That's the good news. The bad news, it's still a very large number that they'll be dealing with. I will also touch on, just very quickly, that, as you recall, coming out of COVID, or during COVID, almost everything was virtual. These days, the committee's structure for public testimony is both in-person and virtual as are meetings with legislators. So as folks look for opportunities, be it council members or the public at large, look for opportunities to testify and to interact with legislators, there are options as compared to just driving down to Olympia for a one-minute testimony session. With the elections that just passed, we saw a small change in the numerically when it comes to the makeup of the House and the Senate. Both bodies picked up, both, the Democratic Party in both bodies picked up one member, which means the Republican caucus has lost one member. So we've got 59 Democrats, 39 Republicans in the House, 30 Democrats and 19 Republicans in the Senate. Of course, we're going to have a new governor coming in, Governor-elect Bob Ferguson. We have three other newly elected, new to the office, statewide elected officials, and a number of others that are incumbents who are returning to their spot. We talked about this earlier, you all talked about this earlier, but these are some of the issues that we know will be front and center during the upcoming legislative session in addition to the budget development. A lot of these pieces will play into that. Education funding for it is always a big one. We know school districts are having some difficulties all around the state these days, so I imagine this is going to be a hot topic. It always is because it's roughly 50% of the overall budget, but I think in this upcoming cycle, it's going to take even more urgency. Housing homelessness, behavioral health are all, can sort of fall under one umbrella or be their own. They're each a very large issue that the legislature is going to be dealing with, both on the policy side and the budget side. And then I do think we're going to hear about revenue issues, both at the state level as well as local revenue issue, or at least possible, local revenues. Just a reminder of your elected officials, the 5th district does touch on Renton a little bit. You've got Senator-elect Bill Ramos, who's moving over from the House, Rep. Callan and Rep.-elect Victoria Hunt, who won the open seat vacated by currently Rep. Ramos, and the bulk of the 11th district takes in Renton. And that's Senator, no change here, Senator Hasagawa, Rep. Burquist, and Rep. Hackney. I will say, normally I would put in here their committee assignments. We now know who the committees that Senator-elect Ramos and Senator Hasagawa will have. We don't know the House members yet because they're still under discussion as they've gone through the reorganization. I will just highlight that Senator-elect Ramos is going to be Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee in the Senate, and Senator Hasagawa has been re-elected as caucus chair by his peers and is going to serve on the Ways and Means Committee as well as a couple of others. And then I think these are some of the issues that you all are looking at as priority issue areas for the legislative agenda. I think they certainly fit, although we have more bullets here, I think they certainly, most if not all, fit under the previous slide showing some of the areas that the legislature would be facing and working on in this upcoming session. Think that's it. So that's a very quick, again, overview of what we believe the legislature will be dealing with and facing. Of course, there'll be a lot of legislation introduced, both prior to the session beginning on January 13, which I probably should have mentioned earlier, and we will see a lot of legislation introduced in the two to three weeks after the session begins, and then it begins to taper off. In the end, we'll probably see close to somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 pieces of legislation introduced in this upcoming legislative session, and that will carry forward. Anything that doesn't pass will carry forward into the next year. Plus, there will be more legislation. So with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions.
Questions? I know we just had a Cal session around this, so you're off the hook pretty easy tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you all. I know we'll be talking about coming down to Olympia and visiting down there. Look forward to having you down there and meeting with our local electeds. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Please plan to visit downtown Renton on Saturday, November 30 for Small Business Saturday and a full day of holiday festivities. Rain or shine, a special holiday farmer's market will be open from 12 to 4:00 p.m. in Piazza Park. Find local holiday treats, crafts, gifts, and more. The Renton Municipal Arts Commission and other group, local groups, will host several free activities in the Pavilion Event Center from 12 to 5:00. At 4:45, join us for more celebrating with the tree lighting ceremony in Piazza Park and the arrival of Santa. What's a holiday season without a photo with Santa? This action-packed day concludes as Santa moves into the pavilion where you can share your holiday wish lists and snap a photo with him from 5 to 7 p.m. For more information about Small Business Saturday events, visit our website at renton/smallbusinessSaturday. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment, and we do have a couple of people signed up to speak tonight. I want to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole, and if you require a response, please provide us with your information. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. State your name, city of residence for the record, and there's a timer. When the little yellow light turns on, please wrap up your comments. And first up is Nora Schultz.
Mayor, that's not an old person light. I can barely see that. So my name's Nora Schultz. I reside at 536 Williams Avenue North in Renton, which is North Renton, for those of you aren't familiar with my address. I'm here tonight as a resident and as a landlord. We experienced, along with everybody else, a significant power outage this week, very unusual for us. Our power went down Tuesday. We were out until Saturday about 3:00. In 57 years, I just outed myself, we've never lost power in North Renton for a day, let alone for four and a half. So it's very difficult to be a landlord and to be freezing and then watch your tenants freezing with you. It's not very comfortable. So I'm not here only to say this, I'm not here to complain about PSE, that's not my point. I am here to ask some questions because I would like to be able to have some things to tell my people who are freezing with me. So I am wondering if, after a significant event like this, if the city does loop back with PSE and maybe do some lessons learned, see if there's something we can do better in the future. I think they could improve their communication significantly to people that are suffering from an outage. I signed up for notifications. I was only notified that my power was out. I have never been notified that my power is back on, but I can attest to you, my power is on at my house, whether they're aware of it or not. So I would also like to know specifically what caused our outage. We were part of the airport outage, and in addition to us, there were five major intersections that were out. Now that the airport has generators, I really hope this isn't going to be our new normal because from what I was, what I could tell, the outage that affected us was the same outage that took the airport down. So in addition to our neighborhood, the airport, and I believe Renton High School, the five intersections that were out were Logan and Fourth, Logan and Third, Logan and Airport, where you make the turn, Airport and Shattuck, which is where you exit the airport onto, or exit the airport onto Airport Way, and Rainier Avenue and Renton Avenue Airport Way. Those are big intersections, and I don't understand why those wouldn't have priority, and it is a miracle no one was killed because people were going straight through those lights and not stopping. I mean, you can't engineer around stupidity, but maybe we could at least try to get some lights back on to kind of curtail some of that. I would like to know if there is something that has changed, if we're on a new normal now, if we need to anticipate that the next storm event could cause a long outage like this, and if there's something I need to do as a landlord to be able to plan for something like this because we're going to have more bad weather. This is not a one-on. And this is not our first storm. We've had terrible storms in the past, and usually people are sleeping on my floor, not the other way around. So I did leave my email. If somebody could reach out to me and maybe respond to these questions, I'd seriously appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
I can answer one question right away. It was the wind that caused the power outage. So this storm was unprecedented in the number of houses and the number of outages in King County. I believe they're talking about making it a statewide emergency at this point. So yeah, we had an unprecedented number of outages throughout the city. And the PSE has a system for rapid response and trying to get everybody back out, establishing power again. We got calls, and there was, I think on day one, 177 crews that were out installing and connecting power, and there was another 77 crews that were actually clearing debris and cutting trees. So there were hundreds of people out there reacting to this, but we'll definitely get back to you on some of the other questions in terms of if this is a new norm or if PSE is changing their strategy moving forward or not, so.
Yeah, I mean, my confusion just comes from the fact that we had all these intersections of airport, a significant part of our neighborhood, and friends of mine that are out in Timbuktu are getting their power on, and we're still in the dark. So it seems like the priority maybe was a little bit off. So thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, next up is Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Diane Dobson here with my Renton resident, hat on, nothing to do with my employment. I'm a neighbor in North Renton, and I know we've come to you guys multiple times, and I guess the whole business, they're impacted too, but right now I'm a resident. The building on Sixth and Park Avenue, everyone's favorite old Boeing building that is full of people, the fence is down, the trees are down now, and I see that the Puget Sound Business Journal has announced that the property is up for sale again, and I just want to reiterate the importance to the council here of the impact on that building, on that North Renton neighborhood. There is an increase of crime, there are transients throughout there. Just drive down from the landing and look up at the 20-foot graffiti on the top of the building. It's horrendous, it's embarrassing. And as I was walking around the neighborhood last night, I thought, you know what really sucks about this, I mean, besides the obvious, is that coming into North Renton, we've got that building, used to be 40 Reynolds back in the day, then it went to United Reynolds. I think it's the City of Renton building now that's condemned, and that's at one entrance to North Renton. The Park Avenue building is another entrance to North Renton. And then coming from Maple Valley Highway, you come in, and there's that, it used to be Herfie's back in the day, but it was Stir, and that's a boarded-up building that's blighted, and the two buildings behind it are burned down. So it's like every angle to North Renton were blighted. So the importance and emphasis on holding those developers and the next owner to whatever means to remediate this challenge to these neighbors would be greatly appreciated.
All right, thank you. We are on to the consent agenda. There are three items for council consideration. Are there any council that would like to hold for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
I move that the content intend to be adopted as published.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the consent agenda be adopted as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries, and we're on to unfinished business. Council President Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee, the whole, has a committee report.
Hey, committee, the whole committee report, 2025 legislative agenda. The committee, the whole, recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the 2025 legislative agenda as presented. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
I move that the council adopt the committee, the whole, report.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the council adopt the committee, the whole, report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has six committee reports.
The Finance Committee committee report, the first is regarding approval of claims of payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment, $15,504,908.11 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers and one wire transfer, and then payroll is total payment of $4,033,574.12 for payroll vouchers, including 1,388 direct deposits and 11 checks. This is for both pay periods in October. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding a grant for our urban forestry program. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the 2024 Community Forestry Assistance Grant Agreement with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources Urban and Community Forestry Program for $35,000. This, too, is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report has to do with the approval of reclassifications and salary grade adjustments for 2025. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to make the following reclassification and salary grade adjustments effective January 1, 2025, and request staff to prepare an ordinance amending the salary table to reflect these changes. Funds to implement these changes will be done in the first quarter budget adjustment of 2025. The first is administrative secretary one and executive services IT, which is one full-time employee, to IT procurement and contract coordinator, grade A11. Principal engineer in public works utilities, this is two full-time employees, and airport, one full-time employee, title change, or title unchanged, grade A37. Next is water quality treatment plant operator in public works, those are three employees, to water treatment plant operator, grade A19. Water utility inspection, SCADA technician in public works, which is a one employee, to the SCADA telemetry technician, grade A21. Water utility maintenance service, maintenance supervisor, one employee in public works, to water treatment operations supervisor, grade A28. Network systems manager and executive services IT, one employee, to infrastructure and security manager, grade M38, and court services supervisor in the municipal court, two employees, to court services manager, grade M25. And finally, adjust the salary grade of the existing enterprise applications manager from M37 to M38. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
The next report is regarding the Renton Student Health Hub contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2024 through 2026 contract with Health Commons Project for the Renton Student Health Hub using HB 1590 funds and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, subject to approval as to legal form. This, too, is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding professional service agreement with janitorial services with CCS facility services. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the professional service agreement for janitorial services by CCS facility services in the amount of $392,458.56. This, too, is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
This is a very exciting development because this contract will allow us to keep all of our 21 public outdoor restrooms clean and open year-round. And with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The final Finance Committee report is regarding change order number 25 to the contract with Pavetta Brothers for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase IV project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute change order number 25 with Pavetta Brothers Construction for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase IV project. Change order number 25 will provide reimbursement to the city in the amount of $1,233,048.44 from franchise utilities, including Puget Sound Energy, Lumen, and Comcast. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has a committee report to present.
A Planning and Development Committee committee report, this is regarding an ordinance amending the 2021 International Fire Code and Fire Prevention Regulations. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adoption of the ordinance amending the 2021 International Fire Code and Fire Prevention Regulations in order to maintain consistency with the adopted Washington State Fire Code, update terminology and/or revisions to reflect current practices. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that the ordinance be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We're on to legislation where we have two ordinance for first reading and three ordinances for second and final.
The first ordinance is regarding adopting the fire code changes. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code as adopted and amended by the State Building Code Council in Chapter 5154A of the WAC, revising the city's amendments, there are two in Section 4570 of the Renton Municipal Code, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next ordinance for first reading is regarding the reclassifications as mentioned previously. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending and replacing the 2025 City of Renton salary table previously adopted in ordinance number 6147, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the first reading for second and final, or first ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the Rainier Grady Way Transit Oriented Development. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing a planned action for the Rainier Grady Junction TOD sub-area pursuant to the State Environmental Policy Act, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. If there's no discussion, this requires a roll call.
Council President Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Member Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, the next ordinance is regarding the zoning overlay for the Rainier Grady Way Transit Oriented Development. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the Rainier Grady Junction zoning overlay, adding definitions, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. If there's no discussion, requires a roll call.
Council President Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes. And the final ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the rezone.
And the final ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the rezone for the Rainier Grady Way Transit Oriented Development. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, changing the zoning classifications of several parcels within the City of Renton from commercial office to commercial arterial, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. If there's no discussion, requires a roll call.
Council President Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Please, for legislation, we're on to new business. Council President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 2, at 5:45 p.m., the committee as a whole will meet. We have one item on the agenda, overview of the 2024 comprehensive plan, and that will be in the conference room center. And then at 7 p.m., we will have our council meeting here in chambers and by video conference. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, December 2, at 4:30 p.m. in the council conference room and via video conference. There's two items on the agenda. One is Doe Street Vacation, and second is emerging issues in transportation, and that's all.
All right. Councilmember O'Halloran?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson?